Yes, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Palacek?
Present.
Commissioner Alwell?
Here.
Chairman Chetwell?
Here.
All present.
Just a quick one that we will be discussing in a little bit more detail, the whole legal procedure involving the regulation in your next agenda item, and that the notice of public hearing was published in the newspaper under Michigan compound laws on May 25th. Yes, actually, I did receive a text from Christopher that they've changed the law, the fed has changed, and they're no longer doing the advanced construct. Now they've authorized MDOT to approve the project direct. So they have the authority to prove we don't have to advance construct and hope they pay us. It's going to be a guaranteed thing. So we need to remove that from the agenda. Good morning, all. So thank you for some time on your agenda today to talk about the school immunization procedures manual that we've been developing at the health department for nearly a year at this point in time. It's been a lot of work that staff have engaged in, and I have some experts in the room with me today as well. Angela Aldrich, our Director of Personal and Preventive Health Services, and Denise Schoenhardt, who is one of our health educators and our immunization action plan coordinator at the health department. So in case we have some really technical questions, I would ask them to come up and help me out. But beyond that, I want to kind of go over the objectives of our presentation today. We want to overview the content of the procedures manual and clarify the applicability, the assessment and reporting responsibility that's associated with immunization compliance in the schools, the compliant, complete, and incomplete status, if you will, that children can have within the school district setting, reinforce the first day exclusion requirements, review the School Aid Act provisions, review the pupil membership count day. These are all relevant. Recommended procedures for school staff, school report cards, the algorithm, and JCHD immunization regulations and exclusions during outbreaks. This does not look like the exactly correct slide presentation I wanted. I don't think it is. So let me see if I can get the right one. So what I'm going to do is to pull up the PDF instead, and we'll go from there. So this is correct. So describing the development of the reporting and procedures manual, clarify the immunization compliance at the parent guardian role, the school role, and the JCHD role. Defining illegal authorities and the requirements under the Public Health Code. These are specific sections, 2433, 2441, 2442, and Part 92 of the school immunization requirements. Want to explain the purpose of a health department immunization regulation. So the legal process for approval of health regulations is defined by MCL 333.2441, and basically requires the health department to prepare a written proposed regulation, which we have done, and it is contained in the manual in board docs. It has been reviewed by legal counsel. The regulation has to be submitted to the county board of commissioners for review prior to a public hearing. And initially, that can be referred to the county board committee in, for example, a study session or the HSC meeting. So that's why we're here today. So this is a referral point. The public hearing in a newspaper of general circulation has to be published, must occur at least 10 days prior to the public hearing, which occurred on May 25th, and at least 20 days prior to adoption of the regulation. If the resolution is approved ultimately by the board, becomes effective 45 days after such approval, which would be August 12th. So the purpose of the standardized reporting and procedures manual, it serves as a reference tool for ensuring immunization compliance. It provides consistency between school districts. It serves as a training manual for new staff at local school districts. It decreases staff time in searching for information in various locations. It organizes MDHHS, Department of Education, and Health Department multiple documents, forms, guidance, rules, and regulations into one manual, and ensures easy access to legal language related to immunization regulation in the public health code. So for purposes of this presentation, we want to give a little bit of definition. Parents or family includes parents, obviously, guardians, persons in local parentis, and students of legal age. We actually do have some students in various districts in the community who are actually 18 years of age and maybe just a little bit older than that. Schools include developmental kindergarten, kindergarten through 12th grade, special education, alternative education, virtual education, and homeschool partnerships. All of those that are connected in one way or another with a public school district are also considered to be a school and are subject to the immunization requirements of the public health code. So within the manual, there are these sections. The legal requirements, the definitions, the minimum requirements for first day of school, acceptable proof of immunization, the first day of school requirements, required immunization notices, dates, and students who remain incomplete. The section also contains a number of other sections, including excluded students and pupil membership count day. We discuss waivers, exclusions, reporting procedures, school report card, which we prepare for the schools, audits, and school immunization reporting contact information. The legal references that apply, whoops, are down below. The, would be the Jackson County Immunization Regulation if we in fact do approve that going forward, and Public Health Code, Part 92 immunizations. There's a lot of appendices to this procedure manual, and I did not include all of these documents necessarily in board docs. They are all very specific for a specific purpose, and they just are what we use to operationalize it from day to day. So I didn't think we needed to go into a lot of detail about all of those. So a closer look. DHHS requires that students are assessed and reported for immunization compliance at specific times. It occurs for all kindergarten students who are new entering into a school district, all 7th grade students, and all students through 18 years of age who enroll as a new district entrant. So if a child is transferring from one school district in the community to another one, they would be assessed as a result of that process. Compliance is, can be a little bit difficult sometimes to define, but it doesn't, it does not necessarily mean that a child is up to date on all required vaccines. Compliance means that one of the following are true. A child is up to date on all required vaccines for age. Child is in a provisional status, meaning that they've had probably the basic immunization requirements for school entry, but they're in a dose waiting period, meaning they can't get the next dose until the time has come. Child has a valid medical waiver signed by a physician and approved by our medical director at the health department, and the family has obtained, or the family has obtained a certified non-medical waiver from the health department. Parents have to ensure that their child is compliant with immunization requirements prior to the first day of school. For children entering kindergarten, 7th grade, or if new to the district, 18-year-old students must also adhere to the requirements. Parents must provide the school with one of the following forms of documentation or compliance: proof of vaccination or immunity, medical waiver from a physician, or a certified non-medical waiver. There's a note here, too, that we do have maybe one or two schools in the community that may require a new waiver every year for those students waiving vaccines. And if the school district decides to do that, we support that policy here at the health department. We think it's a good thing to do, and it's actually a good way of assuring that we don't lose track of students, say, from kindergarten all the way up to 6th grade, and then we don't assess again until 7th grade. So we're supportive of that policy. So the legal basis for the, for parents' role are the Public Health Code, is that a parent or guardian or person in local parentis applying to have a child registered for the first time in the state, and beginning January 2014, a parent, guardian, or person in local parentis of a child entering the 7th grade shall present to school officials at the time of registration or not later than the first day of school. They have to provide a certificate of immunization or a statement of exemption under Section 9215. The school's responsibility is to ensure a high level of immunity against vaccine preventable diseases. The schools have to maintain a record of required immunizations on each entering child. They have to monitor that students have or eventually receive all state required immunizations according to CDC guidelines, and they have to exclude from school those children who do not meet minimum immunization entrance requirements. So the first day exclusion requirement is that students who are non-compliant with vaccine requirements must be excluded from attending school. That's fundamentally what it's all about, from an exclusion requirement. It keeps schools disease-free, and it makes sure that kids are up to date on shots before the school bus pulls up to the door. But we have also built in quite a bit of flexibility on first day exclusion. We have to take other circumstances into consideration. So before the school year begins, parents are informed of non-compliance and given sufficient time to get children immunized, child immunization compliant prior to the first day of school. Kindergarten students, this can take place through the notification during roundup, and roundup is kind of actually being scheduled right now for the next school year. 7th grade students are assessed at the end of the 6th grade year with future needs report. So this is for students who are already in the system. They can easily do this assessment and develop that future needs report, and then inform parents appropriately. And new to the district is assessed at registration. And the topic of invalid medical waivers. If we deem one as invalid through our medical director, there's a 30-day grace period where the student will not be excluded. This provides time for family to get the child immunized, submit a new valid medical contraindication waiver, or obtain a non-medical waiver. So we're recognizing that a child could show up at the first day of school, coming completely from another district, from another state, wherever they would come from, and we've got to provide some flexibility there. New to the district, if a student is new and has not received adequate notification about immunization requirements, the parent will be notified within two weeks of enrollment, and have a total of 30 days, again, from time of enrollment to become compliant with immunization requirements. The legal basis for the school's role under the Public Health Code is that the teacher or principal shall not permit a child to enter or attend school unless a certificate indicated that a minimum of one dose of an immunizing agent against each of the diseases specified by the department has been received and certified to a health professional or local health department. A parent, guardian, or person in local parentis having a child registered with only these minimum doses of immunizing agents shall present an updated certificate within four months after initial attendance, showing that the immunizations have been completed as prescribed by the department. So again, just emphasizing that this is a child basically at a dose waiting status, and we have to accommodate a timeframe that works for getting up to date or completing all the shots. It can't happen instantaneously. Just a quick couple of words about compliance and school funding. Section 167 of the School Aid Act indicates that districts will have 5% of their state school aid funds withheld by the Department of Education if they're not in compliance with immunization requirements of the Public Health Code. By November 1st, schools must have at least a 90% compliance rate. By February 1st, it has to be 95%. And my note below is that historically, all public and private school charter academies, et cetera, have achieved these compliance rates in Jackson County. So we do a really good job, but there's still some issues out there we're trying to deal with. Compliance and pupil count day. Just so we're all clear as well on the impact of school exclusions. The Department of Education has determined that students who are excluded due to immunization non-compliance may be granted and excused absent if permitted by their district board of education. So if the board of education has a policy that says that we will still count them, they're able to count them, even though they might be excluded, if you will, due to immunization non-compliance. Students excused on pupil membership count day and the next 10 consecutive school days may still be counted for state school aid if they physically return to school within 30 calendar days from the pupil membership count day. So this keeps the funding intact for the school districts, at least for these particular count days, if you will, coming into the school district for each school year. So what's the health department responsibility? Well, we work with MDHHS to uphold the mandates of the required childhood immunizations from Michigan school settings. That's required by law in the Michigan Public Health Code. Efforts to keep immunization levels or high are needed to protect children from vaccine preventable disease, against possible serious complications of these diseases from school absence and the loss of valuable classroom learning time related to preventable disease. So I'm going to go quickly through the sections of the immunization regulation. The immunization regulation basically is a tool that we need in public health to exercise our authority responsibility to enforce the provisions of the Public Health Code. It's not sufficient to necessarily rely on the state of Michigan or the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, or their immunization program to come to Jackson to enforce an immunization requirement in a local school district. That's our job to do. So this regulation gives us the ability to do that. It establishes the local health department regulation per sections of the Michigan Public Health Code. It assists us with enforcement of immunization and communal disease laws. It's a regulation designed to assist us in enforcement of state and local immunization and communal disease laws. Nothing in the regulation aggregates or supersedes any statutory or common law rights any person may have. From an enforcement perspective, the health officer or authorized representative has the authority and duty to apply and enforce the provisions of the regulation. Pretty straightforward. In any township, village, or city within the jurisdiction of the health department, and that's really the Jackson County. The regulation itself, it basically indicates and reiterates Section 92 requirements of the Public Health Code, that no student shall be admitted to any school, daycare center, camp, or other organized care or educational facility for preschool, elementary, or secondary level operating in Jackson County unless they provide what's listed there. Proof of required immunizations, the provisional status, otherwise demonstrated immunity against vaccine preventable disease through acceptable measures. That could include waivers. Certification. The health department defines what constitutes acceptable written certification of immunization. It includes, but is not limited to, date, month, year of each vaccine dose required. We try to keep it as simple as possible. We'll specify which diseases to be immunized against, and these are the same ones that are required in the, in the Public Health Code, in the administrative rules. We're not requiring compliance with some vaccine that is not required for school entry. The vaccine is to be used in the manner, frequency of administration, and it's not going to be less than the minimum standards promulgated by Part 92 of the Public Health Code. Medical waivers. Any student with a physical condition such that immunization would endanger their life or health has to submit the state medical contraindication form that's signed by a licensed physician, indicating which immunizations are contraindicated and for what length of time. Medical waiver is subject to review and approval by our health department medical director. That is not something that is defined in the Public Health Code or the administrative rules. That's a function we have found to be very important in terms of reviewing medical waivers that are submitted to the health department for review. We have, and we do find from time to time, that medical waivers get submitted that are not valid when we vet them against the CDC's recommendations and requirements, if you will, for immunization, and, and then we have a dialogue with the physician's office about why they're not valid, and then that information is also shared with the school district. So in the event that a medical waiver is considered not valid, there are two or three things that basically a family can do. They can obtain a valid medical waiver, and they'd have to go back to the physician to do that. They can get a non-medical waiver, which doesn't require any kind of a physician involvement or review, or they can come up to date on immunization requirements themselves. So there are options. And I guess we should point out, too, that sometimes medical contraindication is temporary. They're not usually lifelong, but in some cases, depending on the health condition present in a given child, they could be for many years. But in many cases, the immunization may have been contraindicated because of an underlying current condition. That one is resolved, they could still be eligible to receive the vaccine. So when the contraindication is no longer in effect, that would be the case. Non-medical waivers. This constitutes the bulk of the waivers that we see at the health department. The student or guardian of minor child with a religious or other objection to immunizations must submit a written objection by completing a state-approved form for this purpose and submitting same to the health department. And the parent, guardian schedules required educational visit with us to learn about the benefits of vaccination and the risks associated with vaccine preventable diseases. But, you know, the process works from the perspective that that appointment takes place as an education visit at the health department, and if the parent still wants to have the non-medical waiver, they receive it. It's not a question of denying it.
Richard?
Yes.
If I can interject a question here. Is the educational visit a requirement, a state requirement?
It is.
And is that what they're talking about, potentially changing with legislation right now?
That has been the content of House Bill 4425 and 4426, yes.
Okay. And you've got a note in here about a state-approved form for this purpose. Do we make that available to the parents if they want it?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So Section 7 of the regulation deals with the exclusion of student minor children during a disease outbreak. This is a pretty important thing to have the ability to do. Susceptible children and minor children with temporary or permanent vaccine exemptions, either in the form of medical or non-medical waivers who are not immunized against a vaccine preventable disease, may be excluded from school during disease outbreaks until such time as a disease outbreak has ended. So that helps to remove children from an institutional setting like a school where they are susceptible or determined to be susceptible and not immune to a given vaccine preventable disease that we've identified as occurring in the school district or in a school building, and they could be excluded as a result of that for up to, usually, the incubation period of the disease. So that prevents further transmission, prevents outbreaks, and prevents epidemics. Records. Section 8 is just a description of the records section of the regulation. Written immunization history is incorporated into permanent school, daycare, preschools, camp records in form specified by the health department. They're subject to inspection, audit, if we need to. And summary records must be, can be submitted to the health department in dates and manner specified. And that is in conjunction with the normal school immunization reporting by dates. Promulgation of administrative guidelines. The health department would have to promulgate administrative guidelines under this regulation. For the most part, the immunization procedures manual does that. Supplier-approved forms for recording immunization history of children or minor children affected by the regulation, which we will do and have always done. Penalties. Any person who fails to comply with the provision of the regulation or order of the health officer is deemed guilty of a misdemeanor. And from an enforcement perspective, the health officer can commence appropriate civil legal action in court. I'd have the duty to enforce, to restrain, prevent, or correct an activity or condition which we believe adversely affects the public health, and basically would probably take the form of a show cause hearing as to why an individual parent doesn't have to comply with the immunization requirements for school entry. That's how we anticipate it would go. Interpretation clauses. Regulation and guidelines promulgated are the minimum standards, supplemental to state statutes and admin rules, and any local regulations or ordinances. The more restrictive always applies. Provisions of the regulation apply liberally to best preserve the public health and safety, and the word shall is mandatory. So we might say, well, how big is the problem that we might have to use the regulation? Well, remember that incomplete means a child is not fully immunized. Non-compliant means a child is either not fully immunized or does not have a valid waiver on file. Therefore, a child may still be in school even though they are not up to date on immunizations because they are compliant with the rules, with a valid waiver, or are in a dose waiting period. These compliant but incomplete children are still at risk for contracting a vaccine preventable disease, putting themselves and fellow classmates at risk. So the problem is bigger than it may appear on the surface. So I wanted to share with you 2016, 2017 school year data for the reporting periods of November 2016 and February 2017. These are the two dates that the schools have to complete their reporting by. And in November of 2016, the number of students evaluated was 6,760, and in February 2017 was 7,118. We had 275 incomplete students in November, 228 in February. And non-compliant students, if you will. We had 112 who were beyond the dose waiting period, not up to date on immunizations, and no valid waiver on file. So you can see that we do make some substantial progress and improvement, if you will, from the November reporting period to the February one, but still, we want all students to be compliant with the requirements, and that means they're either up to date on vaccines or parent guardian has received education on the benefits of vaccine and the risk of disease and have valid waivers on file. So just putting this in perspective, in the month of February of this year, we had 228 incomplete students. Those were students who we would have to classify as being vulnerable or susceptible to vaccine preventable disease. And using a case of measles as an example. Measles basically is considered to be eradicated in the United States today because of vaccination efforts. But when we see measles occur in the country, and the most recent case was in Washtenaw County earlier this year, they are imported cases from a foreign country. So what that means is we had a child who was not adequately vaccinated, not vaccinated at all against measles, traveled to a foreign country, become exposed to measles, bring it back into this country, and then you have a case present in your community, and if the case also is incubating and then returns to school the next Monday, you have the potential for significant exposure to a very contagious disease. And depending, if everything lines up and everything comes together the way it should be, you have 10 unvaccinated children in a classroom with a measles case, you're going to have an outbreak. So that's what this looks like if we don't try to make sure that incomplete students are excluded from school. So I want to talk finally kind of about school support of the procedure manual. We created the comprehensive manual to assist school staff in assuring student immunization compliance. We reviewed in detail with school administrative staff to determine the value and ease of use. The feedback was received, that's received was favorable for implementation of the manual and the regulation. I met with school superintendents to review the manual and the proposed regulation content, and the ISD superintendent has confirmed for us that 13 school superintendents approved of moving forward with the manual and the regulation in February of this year. So the purpose of the immunization regulation, just as a summary, provides the health department with the necessary tools to ensure protection of public health and safety, assures compliance with Part 92, provides for the exclusion of unvaccinated students in the event of a vaccine preventable disease outbreak. Enforcement provision applies to parents, guardians, persons in local parentis, et cetera, as well as public, private, parochial, elementary, or secondary schools, and the other organizations that are listed there. And the health officer can commence civil legal action if a party fails to comply with the regulation. I will say this. The regulation that we developed was developed from a model that's already in place and approved regulation in Macomb County. The Macomb County Public Health Regulation has been in existence for 20 or more years. In our conversations with Macomb County and talking directly with the medical director there, they can't actually remember a time when they had to use the public health regulation to achieve the objective of assuring that children are immunized in a school district. to achieve the objective of assuring that children are immunized in a school district. But at the same time, they said they really appreciate having the tool to work with in the event that it's needed. So, I don't anticipate using it very frequently. I think it's going to be rare, but I think when we need to use it, we need to have the authority to exercise to get the job done. So, questions?
Richard, is it fair to say that everything you've laid out for us here only follows state law?
Correct.
And there's nothing more above and beyond that that we're doing?
The only piece that's a little bit more above and beyond what is in state law is our local policy decision to have our medical director review medical waivers. That's the only piece, and we have found that to be effective.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Plachet?
Morning, Richard.
I know this has little to do with the Health Department, but you know, I have a concern with the schools putting their medical records with their school records. I don't know anywhere where you would combine like an employee's records with their health records, and I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for discrimination because somebody doesn't get immunized because of their religion, and there could be somebody at the school that might discriminate against them because they're not in favor of that certain religion.
Well, I guess the best I can respond to that, Commissioner Plachet, is that schools are subject to FERPA, which is the equivalent of HIPAA within the school environment, and none of the records that are contained within Power School, which is a software system that the schools use, can be shared with anybody anywhere else. I mean, those are unique and specific to the child and the family, and only school administrators have access to the data, and I'm presuming it's probably on a need-to-know basis as well. The information we receive from the schools takes place through a reporting process. A school immunization reporting system is used for that purpose, so it's all confidential and secure, and we, of course, maintain any records like that under HIPAA in the Health Department. So, I've not heard or ever seen or become aware of any kind of an issue with records being used in a discriminatory manner, and I don't think that, Denise, you've experienced that either in your role.
When you mentioned the various organizations, how deep do you go? I mean, like Bible study classes that churches have and things like that, do you go down to that level?
No, it has to be an organized educational program that fits one of the definitions as described in the manual and the regulations. So, a Bible study group in a school, I mean, in a church setting would not be subject to this.
Okay. The second question is, is you have, so you have Group A, which is the students who are vaccinated, and you have Group B, the people who have the waivers, okay? What are you more concerned about, B giving something to A, or A giving something to B?
Well...
Both.
Yeah. Well, the immunized students are not at risk in that setting. It's the children who are not vaccinated or incompletely vaccinated that are at risk for disease transmission. What's likely to happen in the scenario I was just talking about with a measles case is that an unvaccinated student comes into that group setting and has the ability to infect all the other B students.
Okay.
So, it's that group of students that would be most at risk.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Just a question for clarification. I kind of already know the answer. I looked through the, one of the other attachments, the School Immunization Procedures Manual, and at first I was kind of confused because in one of the paragraphs on the, on the fourth page, it says that children that do not receive the required vaccines or obtain a certified non-medical waiver or approved medical waiver must be excluded from school. But that pretty much answered my question. It doesn't exclude parents who don't want to vaccinate their children.
Oh, it does not.
It just says that they have to have that waiver...
Right.
...or medical waiver filled out and submitted and approved by the school?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you till Monday.
Thank you. We hope that this all makes sense to all of you and that you'll be favorable to our request to approve the resolution in Monday's meeting.
On to the presentation on desire to switch 911 service providers.
This was the same item that was in the Board Agenda, just in case you'd like to have hands-on and view it.
Under Sheriff, you said this is the same one in the PowerPoint?
That's correct. Good morning. So, here we have some information that I just wanted to present to you, have the Board kind of have a full understanding of what this is, since it does require a resolution from the Board of Commissioners, and have some information on what it is that we want to do. So, currently, our service provider for the 911 center, and when I say service provider, I'm talking about the mechanism and the vehicle in which the 911 calls get to our 911 center. It is currently AT&amp;T. The infrastructure for AT&amp;T is frankly, it's very old, it's antiquated. It's a typical wireline stuff that's been used in the phone industry for many years. And what we want to do is we want to proceed with a switch to a new provider. I say new, although they've been relatively established through Michigan for a very long time. And this network provides a much more flexible backbone, a much more robust backbone, and frankly, you've heard us talk about it as we were building out the 911 center, a next-gen capable network. And all that means is with mobile devices becoming the norm, the information that's getting to 911 is becoming much different, and we will probably see a very big change in the paradigm in the future about what information 911 receives, text, videos, photos, all kinds of different things versus the voice calls that we get right now. The current network that we have is not capable of sending and allowing those type of items to be transmitted to our 911 center. Now, when we built the 911 center out, we made sure that all of our equipment, the things within the center, the nuts and bolts that are making it actually run, were next-gen capable, because that was all coming around, that was frankly, one of the requirements. And so, we have that equipment, we can receive that stuff, but our network can't get it to us. So, that is kind of really the thrust of this, and really, the important part is that this system is proven and tested throughout the state of Michigan. They have it in many, many counties, and we'll get to that in just a minute, and this is becoming more of a norm. As a matter of fact, the counties that don't have Peninsula Fiber Networks or this fiber network is really becoming the minority here. So, this process began about 16 months ago, where Lieutenant Hammond and Director Bustamante from IT began attending these meetings, these sessions, to talk about this network, what it entailed. So, there's been a significant amount of research done. We've not identified any significant trouble points. But before we get into the presentation real quick here, the main thing that probably is the question everyone's mind, at least first and foremost, is cost. And as we had discussed before, and I sent you a image last night of a Jackson County phone bill, throughout the state of Michigan, in every county, there is a, what's called a technical surcharge levied on every phone bill. That technical surcharge, as it's 28 cents here in Jackson County, is directed to that provider for their cost of maintaining that network, fixing the network, I guess if they choose building it out, and essentially allowing that infrastructure for the calls to get to 911. Okay? So, every resident pays that on their phone bill, just like they do in every county in the state of Michigan. This resolution ultimately would be for the allowance or the approval of that surcharge to now be directed to Peninsula Fiber Networks once the infrastructure becomes significantly usable by Jackson County. So, that's the main point of the resolution that the state 911 office and the Public Service Commission requires by the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, is the authority to direct that surcharge to this new company from AT&amp;T. And that is the, essentially, the cost or the funding mechanism to use this network, to build it out, to maintain it, et cetera. As we're talking about cost as well, down the road, as the system becomes usable and implemented, there could be some costs to Jackson County, and those would be in the form of capital costs. I would anticipate less than $75,000. That would mainly be equipment, things maybe needed in the center, depending on what level of data and information we're going to receive. So, the cost is not significant, and there's not a significant capital cost for us to place into the network that is already within the statute within the phone bills. So, as we kind of move along here, we'll go through and talk about what PFN is. Obviously, it was initially a fiber network created in the Upper Peninsula to provide a solution to many of the Upper Peninsula communities and cities and counties up there since it is very rural and very secluded. As this network kind of began to branch out, they obviously serve a large amount of industries, both commercial and government. They began to branch out and start operating fiber networks in the upper lower peninsula, and then from there, it continued to build. And mainly, as I talked about earlier, it's because of the flexibility and the modernization of their network compared to what is currently available. So, there's a lot of technical data here, and I don't want to get too far involved, and I do have Tim McKee from Peninsula Fiber Networks here, so if we have some of those real technical questions, we can certainly get the answers to those, but the main thing that I wanted to touch on was funding is already in place. This is just a technical switch or a required switch for us. Two, the network is very robust and advanced and proven in the state of Michigan. So, essentially, what we're saying is that they are the service provider, they have fully been implemented in 30 counties across Michigan. There's additionally 34 counties, including Oakland, which is obviously one of the largest counties and has the most 911 centers of public safety answering points in the state. And you can see by those numbers there, obviously, a large amount of communities and counties are coming onto the system and selecting this as their provider. This is the visual map I was talking about. The green are counties that are already fully implemented. Blue are the counties that have agreements that have been formalized, and as I understand by talking with Mr. McKee, he is onward to Monroe County this afternoon for the same exact type of presentation as they are embarking upon the same process. There's also agreements pending with a handful of West Side counties, so the map is going to become predominantly blue and green, the tan colors being counties that are still on current networks. One of the other portions that we don't have now that we will pick up through this network is a redundancy, which means a failover capability should some portion of the network be lost. We don't have any real redundancy right now, and we have had those situations in the past where lines are cut, routers fail, and there's a certain loss of capability within 911. Now, keep in mind that currently, we have what I would call multiple trunks or multiple avenues for 911 calls to get to us, but if one of those main lines are severed, we lose a significant portion of functionality, and you're now taking a volume of calls that may be like this, and you're trying to push them through a pipe that's like this, and that becomes one of the problems with this network. It's obviously very resilient, has a large amount of failover capability, and kind of infinite possibilities to continue to get the information to 911, which we think is obviously one of the most important things in a disaster situation or a situation where you may have some significant loss of infrastructure. Then we're on to the next-gen formats like I talked about earlier. Texting seems to be the thing that comes up the most often, which is the most obvious sign of next-gen capability of getting information to 911. Our systems, meaning the equipment and dispatcher, are able to receive that, the network can't. Some of this does have to be ironed out at the state level, like what is the state 911 office going to allow to be transmitted to 911 centers? But I think we can see through the legislative talk, some of the bills that are being introduced, that this is on its way, it just needs to decide a format and how that's going to occur. Because if you don't know, text messages right now are not given a priority in a cellular network. The voice calls are given a priority in a cellular network, which is the main reason for the holdup in that aspect. The texting basically uses available bandwidth on a cellular network, so if you have a lot of voice communication, the text messages, and I'm sure you probably all have seen it before, where a number of messages come out of sequence, maybe you receive the second part of the message before the first part of the message, and that could be obviously dangerous in a 911 situation. So, a lot of those things need to be ironed out at levels that don't, aren't relative to us, but it will be coming, I'm sure of it. And we want to have the network and the ability to receive that information when it does. We don't want to be caught. Yes?
So, we, a person that needs officer assistance will be able to text the request to 911 in the future?
In the future, should those platforms be decided upon, yes. But again, there needs to be some things figured out from the telecom industry about what is going to be the assignment, how do they get that information from their mobile device to the 911 center? If they decided today, hey, we're going to allow that, and this is the procedure, our network couldn't transmit that. This network can.
Okay, I know there's cases where you don't have a good enough phone signal, but your text message will go out. But are we going to be tying up 911 operators with texting rather than communications?
Well, it'll still come in to us in a form of communication. So, it's still going to be received in the same format, but it'll just be noted that it's a different format than a voice call. So, we're still receiving data, we're still analyzing data about who's where. Every phone, I shouldn't say that, most phones are geographically located nowadays, meaning the phone transmit is a latitude and a longitude. There are some phones that don't do that, but the majority of them are. So, location data is received, it's not exact as if you picked up your home phone and called, but it still gives us a starting point. So, it's really one of those things that we're prepared for, we just need to be able to get that information to us.
Well, how would the 911 operator respond to a text? Would they just talk like you can talk into your phone, and then you send it as a text message?
Well, with our...
We have a building?
With our computer dispatching system, which is essentially a software system, you know, they're still at a computer, they're still at a keyboard, so in many senses, I mean, in a perfect world, we would want to identify that number and try to initiate a voice call, right? Because voice is the gold standard. You can talk to somebody, you know what's going on, but there could be situations where someone can't talk. So, you know, again, this is one of the things I talked about, there needs to be procedures formatted, there needs to be some things laid forth about how this is going to go. In a perfect world, I would prefer to initiate a voice call. If no voice call can be initiated, then transmit alphanumeric messages, in a typed message, back to that number. So, there could be multiple options, but you're still, you know, when a call comes in, a 911 operator is dealing with that call, whether they're talking or whether they're typing, because many times, as you recall, I know you've been to the center many times, you can see them taking the voice information and continuing to enter information into the call, and that would still be the same, it's just instead of talking, they're going to be transmitting data back, but that is a little ways down the road, and we can iron out those procedures and protocols when that comes.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Tompkins?
Can you define next-gen?
Well, it's a very broad kind of net, is what we've discovered. So, prior to, let's say roughly 2013, you know, pretty much the standard method of contacting 911 was you pick up a phone and you talk to a 911 operator. With the advent of mobile devices, more specifically, you know iPhones and Samsung phones that have multiple applications within them, it became much more common for people to want to try to contact dispatch through a variety of means. So, the telecom industry and a number of overarching federal agencies realize that in the future, there's going to be people who want to contact 911 via a different method. People don't like talking on the phone. That's just, that's the reality, especially with younger generation. They want to send a message and be done. So, they crafted this definition of next-generation 911, which really means you could contact 911 potentially in any number of formats. You could send them electronic SMS messaging or text message, you could call, you could send a picture or a video... send a picture or a video, and the 911 center could receive all this information. So it's really a wide net of electronic advanced data through a mobile device, is essentially what it comes down to. They haven't narrowed down and specifically said, "Next generation means A, B, C, and D." They left it broad, it's a, a definition for any future electronic communications.
My question is that, you mentioned the word "next-gen," and soon as you mentioned that, my blood pressure went up 200 points. We've used the next-gen system for our electronic medical records in town here for about five, six years, and if you polled the doctors, and the people who use it, all right, about 95% of us hate it, okay? It's just impossible. And they are switching now from next-gen to Epic, all right? And so has University of Michigan, Henry Ford, and other hospitals, because next-gen has not been able to provide what they want, okay? And Epic is a much better system, cost-saving, and so on. So I'm trying to go from my hospital experience with next-gen, and I see next-gen here, and I feel like bothering, borrowing your gun and shooting it, okay, and so on, okay? Because we really don't like it, okay, and so on. So, help me, I mean, is it the same company, the same system, okay? Or is it different? Because to me, next-gen is just poison, I mean, it's...
It's, has nothing to do with medical records, I'll strike that from my verbiage, so I don't... It's a, it's a generic term applied to any type of mobile communication. Several federal agencies, the Emergency Number Answering Association, they've made this designation, and really all it is, is a moniker to say that instead of copper-wire phone lines being able to contact 911, we want to be able to see mobile devices, or any variety of devices, be able to get some communication to a 911 center where that mobile device is. And that's all it means, is that they want to give a platform to get this information into 911.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, sorry to interrupt before you get to the end also. So, the additional cost you said that we would be looking at as a county would be no more than like 75 grand, right?
Yeah, I'm putting an approximation on that, and a lot of that would have to be, a lot of it would be software costs, depending on what level of information we wanted to receive, because you're coming, you're bringing this information in, and you have to transmit it, and make it readable into the computer-driven dispatching system. Some of it would be backroom hardware cost, but the, I guess the point that I wanted to make is, we are not, we are not looking to send out cable companies to trench fiber optic lines, or, or put cabling in, or any of that kind of stuff. That is what that technical surcharge is for.
And then the, the 28 cents that will be transferred to the new company, is that, is that a part of the 911 fee, or is that a separate fee that's charged on the phone bill?
That is a separate fee that's charged on that phone bill. Every resident in the state of Michigan has that technical surcharge on their phone bill, meant to offset those costs by the provider.
Okay. And then, is there a contract that we will be signing with the new company, and if so, how long would that contract be?
The, the agreement would be essentially in perpetuity, just like we have with AT&amp;T. We've made them our service provider. Should at some point down the road, we decide, you know what, we don't like Peninsula Fiber Networks, and we want to go to Epic, then, then we would, we would be in the same process here. We would have a resolution drafted to permit that funding to be directed to this new company. So it's essentially an agreement saying that they will be our provider, and they will be our provider until we decide to change. But there is no requirement that we need to remain with them for, you know, a half-century or anything like that. We've been with AT&amp;T as long as time can remember. I'm sure they've changed names, you know, they were SBC and then Ameritech, but they've continued to be our provider for a long, many years.
Yeah, I just want to say, I definitely support this, because I feel like it's, we would be being proactive in the way that our citizens would be able to contact 911, especially with most of the people nowadays moving away from having a home phone to only having a cellphone. Giving people that option to be able to text if they have an emergency would definitely be something that I will be in support of, in general, so I like the idea.
Thank you.
Further, have we had others bid on this, or is this a sole vendor bid?
In, in many ways, this is a sole vendor bid. There's only, essentially, two companies that offer this service, which is Peninsula Fiber Networks and AT&amp;T. There is a portion of Frontier Communications that offers this, but they are pretty well consolidated to the southwestern part of the state, northern Indiana, where their, I guess how called their bedrock is. As we kind of set out and looked at this, going back to what Commissioner Mahoney said, is we kind of waited and watched the other counties around us to see where they were going, because one of the other things we'll talk about in just a minute, is the ability to essentially relay information from 911 center to 911 center with, with no loss of capability. We don't have that now. We can transfer calls, but there's a loss of capability, a loss of information. So as we watched these other counties, specifically counties like Lenawee and Calhoun, Washina, things like that, they all began to go with this system, and as they ruled out their agreements, we decided it was time to proceed with this after we had gotten the information. So, I guess in many ways, it is a sole source. The, the only other competition is the company that we currently have, which their infrastructure does not, does not meet our capabilities.
So have we offered them an opportunity to bid, though?
Well, we did have a presentation from AT&amp;T. They have, let me take a step back. They've obviously been receiving this technical surcharge for a long time. I don't see any significant enhancements or build-out of their network. I could be wrong, I don't know every aspect of their network, and I'm not a telecom guy. But I do know when they offered us a, what I would call a very similar solution, or very similar network, that came with significant capital costs for Jackson County, which my question was, you're already receiving the technical surcharge, why, why are you asking for more money upfront? And they claimed it was because they needed enhancements to their network. So, based upon that, I didn't feel like that was a feasible solution. So there's a number of things here, obviously, we kind of talked about redundancy, there's a number of also included tools or capabilities with that. Some of those things are described as, you know, disaster recovery phones, where if we had to leave the center, we could take these devices, pick up from another point, or if there's significant impairment to the, to the network, you would still have connectivity to the network. As the, obviously, the network continues to be built out, as things continue to change and are enhanced, those features are automatically available and integrated on the network. This, we kind of already talked about, a lot of those cost areas on the left side, those are things that we already have, that we already specked out in the new 911 center, and the additional costs, as we referred to earlier, would be largely in hardware cost and be fairly minimal for Jackson County. This is just a, a network map showing Peninsula Fiber Network's design and where their infrastructure currently runs, so you can obviously see our wonderful county located on there. We're well within reach of their network.
Chris, if you know, looking at the map there, it looks like that line follows I-94, maybe? Was that the fiber optic we saw put in a few years ago?
Tim says yes.
I guess one last question. I've kind of heard this bounced around at the state, what direction is the state police going?
Well, largely at this point, all the PSAPs are left up to, the 911 centers are left up to their local jurisdictions, whether it be a city or a county that decides they want to have their PSAP. The state is not taking a hard stance on this, although I think that they are, through their regulations and legislations that's being talked about, I think they are encouraging PSAPs to move in this direction to a flexible backbone platform. And that seems to be very clear, based on some of the things that they're saying, some of the things they're doing. And it only makes sense, I think it is the future, not next generation, it's the future of, of delivery of 911 services and the network to do it. So, you know, within that, obviously, they're not defining or selecting a company, but they're encouraging public safety answering points to become capable of receiving any type of communications that they decide, or the legislature decides in the future should be received. So largely at this point, I just wanted to present the information to the Board of Commissioners. I wanted you guys to see some of these maps, to have the opportunity to ask questions. I know this is, in many ways, a complicated topic, but it doesn't have to be. We can take the understanding that it's a, it's, it's a platform able to transmit and receive a large amount of data, has failover redundancies, the cost is already provided in the surcharges on the phone bills of all the residents, so we're really just looking to go to a different company. And then, of course, if the board sees fit, I have a pre-formatted resolution the state of Michigan requires, that would be at the study session, and we can have further dialogue if we need.
Chris, if we decide to go to this, is it a agreement that's long-term, or is it something that we can change from time to time if we choose to, or what type of agreement is it actually?
Well, it is an agreement saying that we select Peninsula Fiber Networks as our 911 service provider, or I think what's technically called our selective router provider, meaning we define them as the company who's going to get the 911 communications to us. As Commissioner Mahoney kind of asked earlier, it is essentially an agreement selecting them. Because of the large investment work that's needed to change a lot of this infrastructure on the telecoms end, it's not something you'd want to do very often. As I, as I referred to, I know that we've been with AT&amp;T, Ameritech, slash SBC Global for at least the last 20 years. There is significant work in that, which Peninsula Fiber Networks will do for us. So it's not something you'd want to do very often, but the agreement does not tie us to them for a legacy, a timeframe, a lifespan, anything like that. If the service becomes to the point where we feel it's been degraded, or we feel that it's not what Jackson County needs anymore, we can certainly do the same thing, bring a resolution before the board and select a different company, although I don't see many other avenues available right now, as you can obviously see by the color shading on the map.
And then whoever we select in the future would draw those same funds from the state?
That's correct, assuming there's not some change in funding mechanisms by the state of Michigan.
Thank you.
Further questions from commissioners?
I just forwarded all the commissioners a presentation that we got from MAC regarding the next-gen, so it's just more of an FYI. It's a little, as far as some of the legislative pieces in, in that presentation that I just forwarded you guys, those are a little outdated, obviously, because legislation has changed a little bit, but the concepts and some of the background of why next-gen is the thing of the future is, it's kind of all in that presentation. And the contacts for people, for the people that are the, I guess, information people is also on that, so you can contact them directly. And then the actual map is a little outdated, as it was last fall, but pretty much, there's a ton of counties, and he referenced it, but didn't name them, but it, it shows the future forecasts of all the counties that were switching to next-gen as well, so, just FYI.
I do, I do have one more comment that I kind of alluded to earlier, but I think it's important. Though we are going to initiate this process, if the board sees fit, they're going to pass the resolution, agreements will be signed, this is still about an 18-month process to make this, this change happen, to give PFN the designation, to start all the processes on the backend of what needs to happen. So it's not something that's going to become realized in a very short term, it is a very long-term process, but this is the first step, and, and obviously, the very, very much needed step.
Any further comments? Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and questions.
Before you, you have something that sadly, we've, it's become all too common and too familiar, which is, we've declared, it's a resolution declaring Leoni in default of the SRI bond payment. We are seeking a board approval of this resolution. They, this next payment is due July 1st, we need to prepare, to prepare to pay it if they do not send us a check prior to then. It's $342,343.75, which brings our collective total up to over a million, now that we have paid on behalf of the SRI and Leoni, which is, basically, the number is $1,016,568.76. A few weeks ago, two weeks ago, maybe, I think it's about two weeks ago, maybe a little bit over, we were in front of Judge Laflamme, they did make some oral arguments, and I know they submitted, of course, briefs, and he took that information and said that he would, said he would get back to us, and left the courtroom, so. We are still waiting and anticipating some sort of decision by Judge Laflamme. But at this time, we need to go ahead and approve the resolution, so that we can prepare to make this bond payment in the event that Leoni does not. I would remind everyone that to fail to make the bond payment would be a direct reflection on the county's bond status, and given that we have bonds, or, and additional bonds we wish to sell, we would hate to see that happen, of course. Mike, out of curiosity, has anything been captured from Leoni's revenue sharing, and how much, if so?
I don't know the total, but...
Yeah, but we capture routinely, I just don't remember the number total.
Yeah, typically, the payments are about $6,000 a quarter, and it's probably five to six of the, the quarter payments have been received.
So maybe $40,000?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this topic?
Question, are we taking action on this right now?
No.
Are we?
Yeah.
Why does it say 617 in the resolution? I'd like to offer a resolution then to approve the...
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Duckham. By Commissioner Lightner, any questions to the motion?
Post the vote?
August board meeting, needs a date change.
The county clerk's conference is that same week, and...
I actually called Mike on this yesterday when I saw that. I, I don't have any problem changing it, but normally, our meeting would have been on the 15th, would it not have? And that was moved to the 22nd, it looks like, when we scheduled the meetings for some reason. Is that to do with Fair Week or something, or what?
I believe it is.
Well, Fair Week's the week before, so standing committees are...
The standing committee was the problem. Standing committees are Fair Week.
Well, so when our standing committees, my calendar shows them on the 14th. I see, okay.
So study sessions on the 8th, standing committees are on the 14th, and then our board meeting would be the 29th. Do we need a motion to approve that?
Yes.
Is it already scheduled for study session on the 8th and 14th, or, or ready?
It's posted.
Okay. I would... I would move that we move our board meeting from August 22nd to August 29th.
Have a motion in support to change the date. Any questions to the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried.
If I may too, just, Delaine is watching upstairs, she just sent me a text. Hi, Delaine. She said that it's also due to the, we moved it back due to the July meetings, because we moved those as well. Okay, so it's all cascading together, is what it is. Thank you, Delaine.
Any other items from commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none. Return to public comment. Any public comment? Seeing nor hearing none. Commissioner comments?
Sarah? I just want to reference Fair again. We just made an announcement last week, I think, or two weeks ago. We announced a fourth show for the Fair, and we're bringing back old country, I guess is what I'm going to call it. So, we're going to have Sammy Kershaw, Aaron Tippin, and, oh, who was the other? Oh, Mark Chestnut. So, that's going to, yeah, Chestnut. Anyways, so, we're pretty excited about that, and the tickets are super reasonable. Those are on sale right now at the Fair box office or etix.com. We also have the Rock Show, and we have the comedian, and...
Florida.
Oh, yeah, Florida and Macy Gate. So, lots of entertainment this year at the Fair. Tickets are super reasonable, so go get them.
Florida, these apple bottom jeans.
Daniel Kinsey at karaoke style, I'm sure.
I want to remind everybody about the parks announcement in June 22nd, still on schedule, for the zero-depth water feature to be put into the Cascades, and everyone should wear clothing that can get wet if you show up. So, please keep that in mind, because it is the grand opening of the Splash Pad. And if you get a chance, get out and walk the trails. We've got some really nice ones all of a sudden that are really popping together real quick here, and I think it's going to be exciting, and I've had nothing but good comments from the community about what we're doing with our trails and connecting them all of a sudden, and they see really what's going on with our park system.
When's this last been?
June 22nd. Any further commissioner comments?